Yeah.
In the morning, we need your eight o'clock, Dylan is gonna give you.
Yeah. He can't figure it out.
I'm gonna give him another one. He can take one home with him and leave one here.
False recommendations here.
Got, uh, got, um, insurance. We've got it turned in. We've got, uh...
Probably lose him.
We didn't lose a whole lot. We ended up just got to find ourselves a toilet paper. Didn't, a lot of it was skin. It was a big thing. Gotta get it fixed back on the heat and cooling or the, for the flooring stuff. Before winter, but I was shocked at the beginning. Come in and it's way cheaper than what I thought. He thought it was high, but it wasn't bad. So we're gonna show them tear off the rock too. And the roof probably put tin on the outside. It'd make it look a lot better.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we didn't lose a whole lot. We, yeah.
Okay, again, we're gonna call us, be in order, welcome you, buddy here tonight. We have, uh, two county commissioners. Appreciate both of you being here and having concerns with the Board of Education. Uh, we've got Mr. Eddie West here tonight, my Q3 here, and we got our cameraman. I don't know his name, but he's got him here. Okay, first item on the agenda will be our prayers list and prayer, and I'm gonna turn that over to Mr. McHale.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Jerry. Well, let's remember Joyce West family, the Lee Davis family, Hubert Coverth Jr. family, Barry Horrible family, Jude McHale, Diana Shodders, Courtney Taylor, Cedric Lancaster family. Is there any others that we need to?
Remember my family. My dad passing, uh, his wife is still having a hard time with it, so just remember my family.
Any others? All right, let's pray. Lord God, with us, thank you for this day, God. Thank you for the opportunity that we can come and come into our heavenly Father's presence and rest and take rest in you, you said, and we thank you for that. And these concerns and these hurts and heartaches, God, we lay them at your feet. Thank you for, uh, being with us tonight, guide our paths, help us to make decisions that would glorify and honor you, and thank you for this day again. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which is safe, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I hope you've all had a change. You look at your board, Patrick, Gordon, anything you need to, will change. I think we will change one item here in a minute. Set items, uh, we got four minutes for May the 28th, special call for June the 10th, and school support organizations, which is Smith County High School. Do I have a motion to approve?
Still no.
Motion in second. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Superintendent's actions. Uh, anything y'all need to ask about that before we go on?
I'd like to thank Norma and whoever helped you. We just received another, Camp Massey's about a $450 grant. Should that dirt, say in ten years, we close that lifetime playgrounds and rubber road, uh, not only the ones that we typically upgrade on an yearly basis, it will upgrade seven, ten, the property value using the actual playgrounds that was even in preschool, will be upgraded never one. Pretty awesome deal.
That's awesome.
Appreciate it. It's a big deal. As you say, a $400,000 grant for a mo, for a rubber mo, for the playground. And some of the recycling tires, tire trucks in Tennessee.
Yes.
That's good.
Pretty, really nice too. They're gonna come in and remove the dirt. It's all, when it's bid out, it's a good deal.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Good job.
Fantastic. We don't thank her enough for what she does. She does a great job.
She does a great job.
Thank you.
On you business, if it's all right, uh, if Lewis is not feeling very well, I'd like to pull out of, oh, which is discussion of possible appointment for a legal representation for Smith County Board of Education. Now, uh, we're gonna pull that up and talk about this right now. Uh, we've had three candidates. We've all asked questions, talked to all of them. We took in a whole lot of information from these three candidates, a lot, and, uh, I would like, if possible, somebody to make a motion to table this for 30 days, give us a chance to exorcise the information that we have.
I make a motion that we put this to our next meeting, Mr. Jerry.
Now, second, I'm in.
I'll second, but I got a question.
Yes, sir. Just, just in a minute. Uh, the, we do also still have Ms. Moore as our attorney right now, and we will keep her as our attorney until we make a decision on who we're going to hire as a permanent attorney. Now...
I do have a question. I know, uh, last night with the budget and everything, are we gonna have to have another special call meeting, uh, for us to talk about our budget? Because that could be put on that meeting rather than put it off for 30 days.
Oh, I don't know if we've got anything.
I don't think the way, obviously, whether we decide to do anything or decide not to do anything, it won't change by Monday night. And I understand this budget, they're gonna be voted on to the end of the month, June, July?
No, it is not.
So if that's the case, you're gonna have time. It'll probably get somewhere to get an idea if you, if you do want any changes presented. It takes a while. It's not simple to strike it, but I don't know when we'd have a special call because you're gonna have a monthly meeting before plenty of time to prepare it.
Okay. I didn't know if we was gonna have to have it before their next meeting.
I don't think so unless somebody wants you.
Y'all are gonna push off the budget to July, aren't you? You're not, you're not gonna pass the budget June, what we got together.
Budget will not be passed Monday night if you, uh, whatever.
Okay. That was my question.
Well, if like in July, you'll have to do something July, correct?
We will.
Yeah. Okay. August 31st. Pardon?
It's actually August the 31st.
August the 31st, when it has to be passed?
It has to be submitted.
That's big, excuse me, it has to be, we gotta pass it, it has to be submitted by the 31st.
Yes.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you. Uh, and again, if, when you, uh, start, if you start messing with these numbers, this is not, you can't call Norma up and say, cut this $500,000 or $200,000. She can't just go around pencil writing through it and start figuring it in. It takes hours for her to, and, well, days, for her to get this recalculated. So that is one thing that, uh, you know, whatever we do regardless, we gotta be firm on it. Everybody's gotta be in agreement with what we do. So if there is a situation that we have to move some numbers around, then give her plenty of time to get it together and be able to present it back to us like it's big.
Question.
Yes, sir.
And I apologize. I know we've got a little bit of a headache here, but I'm, I'm just trying to follow what you're saying. So we're not going to discuss budget, uh, tonight, correct?
No.
All right, so I know it takes time, but if there's any alterations take place, I mean, you're exceptional at what you do, but you can't be expected to do something like that. So, um, if there's gonna be any changes in that, do we need to?
Well, you put it, I would think you put it on the agenda the next time.
I would, I would highly recommend we have another special call.
We better.
I've got a few ideas.
That's my point, Tommy. I, I mean, unless I'm out of order, Mr. Jerry, but if I am, it won't be a first time a lot, but how are we gonna come in here and quick draw and expect this lady to make alterations with anything if we don't have a, a meeting and, and talk about this? We've got to talk about this, fellows. I mean, that's just my opinion, but I'm one of, hired a meeting.
Scotty, I think, I think with their business understanding, that would be when you would make, they're gonna give you two weeks to get ready for their...
Okay.
I think.
But, I mean, that's a lot of, I, I don't know.
What is the next board meeting, the 16th?
I think it's right.
You might take, yes, and, I do that every once in a while. I might keep it for...
I don't know what the date is.
Yeah, I got you, I got you.
For the commission meeting for July, but I know there's a, uh, I don't think it's, but, uh... For them to go over some items. It is, yes, and not even, uh, but it's not about the school board or, or anything. It's, it's other stuff.
What, plenty, next board meeting?
July, so around 16th.
16th. So that should get over. Everybody plenty of time.
And you can have, like Scotty's saying, if you wanna have a special call meeting and then have her have, flare the vote on it, if there's no changes or changes.
That's, that's kind of where I was getting at.
Yeah, if I can, can I just say one thing that I should have, like, Tommy says, talk too much already, but listen, we're talking about the budget. So, plenty of time. If there's any things we said or done, but I, I don't want, and it's just me and how I feel doesn't represent everybody's things or whatever. But we need to get on with whatever it is we're gonna do. We owe that to our employees, and, and they're dangling out there waiting to see what's gonna happen. It's not fair. Let's get on with this, whatever it is. It's not right.
Yep.
I, I think if, you know, if, if we met even a week before the meeting or two weeks before meeting and kind of laying out some of our ideas, yes, it's a good idea.
You might have figures and options or have it figured.
Yeah, and we could probably tell her kind of what the idea is, and she could have it figured and come back to you and say, well, it's not gonna work, it is gonna work or something, and then we can talk about it, and then at the meeting on the 16th, we could pass our budget if we need to and send it back.
I do know that it has to come to the full commission when it comes back. It don't go to the budget files.
Got you.
Does it still reject a body commission?
So it has to go to the full commission.
The full.
Well, I just think we owe it to our employees to get on with it.
I think we just think that, keep what we got and make it right. Don't you say, I, let me keep what we got and make it right.
Motion in second on this?
Not, not on this, we don't. We have a, we have a motion second on tabling the attorney.
So you want to have a special call meeting?
Not yet.
No.
You got a motion on the table for, for...
We done, we done done that.
We even voted on it.
We are, we're in discussion.
We just got a second from Mr. Glover.
Yeah, in discussion, and we jumped in on this other thing.
Oh, okay.
It was all on that one, then I, then I...
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Now, so this board, you will be our attorney till we hire an attorney, whether it be you, Mr. Cagle, or Eugene, even with other words, that is the, uh, understanding for everybody. Everybody understand that.
Yes, sir.
Now.
Yes, sir, now.
I would like to, to, for us to, make a motion, for us to set a special call board meeting to discuss the budget. And do it at least a week, at least, before the next one.
Now, you did come up with a time, a date.
Can I say this?
Yes, sir.
There's a lot of people, Smith County, next two weeks dead period, you know, it shuts down.
Right, we got, we got vacations.
I would say, suggest you do it, not next week or the next one, but following week.
I, I would too. I would too, probably in the second week of July.
July 9th is, is a week prior to your regular scheduled board meeting.
Cause I'm like on Tuesday, Tuesday, Monday, Monday, it don't make no difference.
Okay, I'll be here Monday night.
Do you give us...
I'll be here Tuesday night.
I, I care.
I won't be here any of, cause my wife starts her stem cell transplant. They will pull the cells next week, and I gotta be at Vanderbilt for 36 days, so they'll start her stem cell transplant, and, uh, I won't, I won't be here during the next 36 days, so.
You'll be in your terms.
Uh, the next, I just got the notation a while ago. The next Wednesday, prepare hers and pull her stem cells Friday, and then, uh, then they will send them off for two weeks, but we'll be, I'll be out of, the next 36 days, now we got.
How about July the 9th, then? I said, I, I, I would ask for a motion to have a special call board meeting to talk about the budget on July the 9th.
What time, 5:00?
Should we put a, should we put a notice in the paper, Mr. Jerry, or not? We will. I felt so. That's what I thought.
Okay, oh, sorry.
I didn't know for a special call.
Okay, all in, any more discussion about it July the 9th for a special call meeting? It's on Tuesday night. All in favor?
Yeah.
Pose. July 9th. Okay, let's go on to, uh, the TSBA policy recommendation. Do I have a motion?
Yes, sir.
Second.
Second.
Where are we at again?
In discussion. In what? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
Come on, little mousy.
Request to approve tuition amounts for non-resident students.
Did I do it for you?
I did, I did. We asked, going up, Mr. Winford this question, and it says you check made, so you can, I, you can limit it or not limit it. I said, Joe, take it easy. So it, it, you know, I think that was a question, right from the table, if we didn't...
Tuition, tuition accounts, okay.
It is legal to do what you want to do.
I wish we had him here. We have some kind of policy already in place.
Yes, we do. That's been done, that was back 2009. Well, it's been a long time ago because we set one back years ago, years.
VB. VB, yeah, I put it for you. Yeah, I got VB.
Robbie, it's on there. It's been a long time ago, we set one, that if you didn't live in this county, you didn't go to school, you know, you didn't be a resident of this county, you don't study here. There was no tuition or anything because, and I still, I voted on it that, said it that way. I'm still firm on it that way today. If you don't live in this county, you don't go to school in this county.
Yeah. Does that work for the teachers, like they, like kids, you know, teacher working?
They're example because they're employees.
Okay, that's what I was thinking, I'm sure.
Are we in discussion? Can we discuss this?
Let's make a motion. If anybody wanna make a motion on it.
I'll make the motion to approve.
July 2nd.
For me, I'm saying.
You go second?
I will, talk about discussion. What are we, are we approving to not have or to have tuition?
We're discussing. We're making... At least he's second for a...
A discussion, okay. I did tell that discussion.
Yeah, and now we get out of discussion, and that, and again, that's firmly how I feel on it regardless.
I, I, there's a reason why the county's borders are closed. What bothers me about this, I'm afraid if you open up the borders, what if it's that one child that causes you to have to have an extra teacher? What if it's a couple of kids coming in that you don't have classrooms for, and it gives you all the crowds? There's a reason why the borders were closed years ago, and I, I know my father-in-law took a lot of heat over that.
Yes, he did.
And you probably did too, Ricky.
I did, I took a lot over too, because at that time, they were kids, oh, they were coming here from Airwater, and when we made it from that point on, it was a situation where if you had a family that had five kids, that three of them were in, enrolled in this county, them other two, once we made that vote and decided, those other two did not come in, I mean, you had three going to one county and two going to the other county because in the county they lived in. Now, gentlemen, you're opening up a Pandora's box here. I mean, a big box. There's a whole, I know it has to do with sports, but it also opens up other things that we dealt with before. It was a situation to where if you lived in another county and you didn't like the way we were doing, they were doing things, you go to Smith County, they'll take anybody. We started getting kids that had to pay $40,000 to $50,000 a year to take care of them. We had a lot of different things going on there, and once we stopped that, it...
We had busing problems.
We had, buses was, it was crazy. I mean, I know she has trouble with buses now, but when we were sending them in the tri office of county, Bayton County, Jackson, I mean, they were running all over every county. Big enough kids, and, uh, very, like I say, you're opening up a huge Pandora's box here, but now, that's, you left what everybody else want.
Yes, I got a couple of questions, and I, and I made the motion to approve it because I wanted to discuss, right, uh, because I, I'm kind, I'm flip flopping on this, on this subject because on one hand, I'm flattered we have students that want to come to our system. How many students do we have right now that, do we know that, that want to come to the system?
We have none paying tuition, it's, it's...
I know we have none now because we don't have a policy, but, uh, do we, is there an interest of other kids, other students wanting to go there?
We got about four right now, probably most that I can ever remember, one in one year. We got one family of two, and we got two, uh, one in two different counties.
And what, uh, what kind of stipulations could we put on it if, if we did have to hire a, another teacher, if we had to split, split a classroom because of it? Would, could those students, could all those students be approved or disapproved by the board on, and, and have those stipulations in front of us?
Ms. Moore?
Well, I'm sorry.
Like if we have a student that come in, like every student that, that wanted to be approved to come to our county and wanted to pay this fee to come to our school system, could the board approve or disapprove each child?
Based on parameters, like he was talking about.
On a case per case.
Case per case.
Not, not, not the way the policy is written. It says, policy, they shall be approved by the director of school, number one, okay. They shall pay the tuition annually. We wouldn't have a, you, you vote for this, you ain't got a choice in this.
I think it would be a very slippery...
It'd be a slippery slope.
For you all to choose which student should allow you in your system and not other people making it all or nothing.
Yes, sir.
Just a question and a comment. We already have a policy in place, am I mistaken?
This policy says it's been in place since 2005, 2002, 2005.
So we have a policy in place against this, correct, Tom?
There is a policy in place that don't set a fee.
Well, I mean, we're just, we have a policy in place against this, and it's based on past history, and, and Mr. Shodder's given some commentary on that, so I guess my remark on this would be, I mean, gentlemen, we're already telling everybody we're gonna build a school, and we're overrun, and we talk about that every meeting and everything else. We can't cram another one. We're gonna build a school. We've spent $200,000 for a student. I'm not gonna vote to open this up. I mean, how can we say that we're overrun and we're gonna spend all this money and everything and then open the floodgates? No, if we've already got a policy, I'm not gonna vote to favor doing this. It is contradictory to what we've been arguing about for months. I'm not gonna do that.
I believe you, you're not looking, looking here, but I believe the policy now is if, if they can come, if it is approved, if they pay the tuition. You need to make sure that's understood, what you're...
Then we'd better do a study on the policy and get it prepared, but I...
Well, it's, it's only approved by the, the, it says by the director of schools, and right now, we have closed borders.
Well...
About closed borders.
We do.
Do we know any counties around us that do something of this nature?
Some of them have it open, some of them have, I mean, it's just each county's got their own.
Again, I'm not gonna vote to change the policy that's already in place. It's reasonable for it, and if we're bursting at seams like we claim we are, and we spent $200,000 to do a study, and we had this group come in here and tell us what pitfall shape we was in, and, you know, we're gonna go to county and spend a kibiong dollars to get our children in a classroom. Find the world where we try to herd more, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna support this. It's contradictory to what we've been preaching for months.
And regardless, what you said to tuition, regardless. You gotta put it somewhere, and you gotta accept anybody. You can't just pick and choose who you wanna do. I mean, you can't do that. Once you...
You could, you shouldn't.
I know well, somebody's gonna, whether I start paying a whole lot of attorney fees if we pick and choose. I mean, a lot of, it will be in court a lot if we start picking and choosing.
I'm all about a child getting good for education, but I'm also believe that we have children at home right now in crowded situations, and that needs to be our priority, and we need to take care of our children right here in this county. That's, that's what we was elected to do and stay on that course. We, again, a lot of these schools are crammed in every corner within our debate committees. I'm, I'm not gonna vote to change the policy. I'm like, y'all too.
Okay, you want discussion? Not, we're gonna have a roll call over this. Mr. Jones, what's your view? Or, no, Mr. Allen?
No.
Mr. McHale?
What are we voting on again, Mr.? I'm, I'm a little bit confused just for...
What we're voting on here is to, uh, allow, and correct me if I'm wrong, that we are allowing students to come into our county to school, but with paying a tuition.
With paying one?
With paying a tuition, and I think it was what, said it, two?
It was like...
Twenty-six hundred.
It's between 26 and 2900 dollars down. We took the TISA.
Right, TISA.
For child.
Yeah, and that's what we done this. This opened it up everywhere, don't matter. I mean, it don't make no difference.
What county?
And we can pick and choose who we let come in.
And come after.
We can't, we can't do that. Other words, you know, you're just, by the way, get ready, there's gonna be lawsuits, we'll talk about it.
Can, but you've been called.
Oh, you'll be in court all time, so.
So we're not amending this mo, this...
We're just voting to stop it or let go ahead.
Well, you already have a policy related to this. What it is doing is actually setting the tuition amount.
So, so if I'm far as keeping it this way, I feel like I'm confused on this. Would it be a yes or no vote? I'm asking...
Yes, vote means that you go set tuition and let them come in.
No means no.
I got you. No.
Vote no.
Yes, sir.
No. No. No.
No.
No.
Make sure we understand it's closed.
Vote is.
That same person can buy a house, obviously, can be a... Make sure we understand it's a closed, unless, that same person can buy a house, obviously, come here, but.
They buy a house.
Or rent a, rent a. I, I had that happen on the golf team, golfers, their parents move their child to Canada.
They buy, if you want to buy a house.
Or rent a house.
Yeah, or, and have an address inside Smith County. Yeah. You know, there's nothing we do right now.
Always, it says teachers, but always, that's unfair, we try to be pretty, if it's a employee, we allow them to come.
Yeah, that's still intact.
Yeah.
Employee, employee can bring their child, that's still intact. What this is, is this eliminates anybody from, say, I'm going to go to Smith County school, not live in Wilson County, here's my money, I'm going.
Yeah. What about this?
It's closed, you can't go, unless you live here, or rent here, or something.
But I understand what we done.
Yep.
Okay, all right. Let's go on to, uh, permission to request qualification for a construction manager for the former Sabalot building renovation project.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? If not, Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Apple?
Yes.
Mr. Caleb?
Yes.
Mr. David?
Yes.
Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Mr. Glover?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Myself, yes. All right, uh, special education contract with Stella Therapy Services LLC, motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I second it.
Discussion? Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Apple?
Yes.
Mr. McHale?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Mr. Glover?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Approval for Dr. Building Corporation for Metal, Wood and Woodworks for Wellness Center, do I have a motion?
Some move. Second.
Second. Uh, discussion? This is money, John, Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Apple?
Yes.
Mr. McHale?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Mr. Glover?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Bid approval for Layon Court Southeast for Equipment and Installation of Wellness Centers, motion.
Some move.
Second.
Second.
Discussion?
Discussion.
This, this is not the floor, this is just the goals, the man.
This will be, this will be, this is not what, now, this is like, not the actual program, no. This is going to come back in front of.
The goal, the ball goals, the net.
Yes, ball goals, yeah, me and still, I, me and I talked this morning, I, we're still back and forth on the court, I want the board to play a big part, and maybe, we've even talked about getting the coaches to go visit, and say, it's going to be, it's kind of shot, it's a number, it's going to be about seventy thousand dollars difference from wood to this super grade. That's not what, what we thought it'd be, I don't know how they're doing it in that ballpark, but.
Her building, right? Is that her building?
Her, oh, yeah, I don't know what they're doing, that, but, not seventy total, but seventy more, so, that's a decision when it gets down to, to get a culture, and that, and we might want to save more of our money there, right there, because we're going, we're getting pretty, toward the end of the project, if you don't mind.
Yep.
Any more discussion? Mr. Wayne, Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Apple?
Yes.
Mr. McHale?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Mr. Glover?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Request to participate in a community eligibility provision, which allows all students to eat free breakfast and lunch for an S Y twenty-four, twenty-five, do I have a motion?
Yes, sir. Second.
Second. Discussion?
I would like to say, this would be for a year trial, to make sure, we think it'll actually generate some revenue, right, and we, we don't know it, we try, we're hoping it will, but I think it's awesome if we can feed every child in Smith County for free, if we can do that, uh, for breakfast and lunch, that's another goal, I want to see that, that's awesome. Uh, I hope we can sustain it, that's we're hoping, it'll be a year of trial, you know, it could lose money, we hope, we think it'll make money if we do a good job with it, but we're very excited about that.
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
Do we know how much, uh, money we've lost on fees, or don't have in fees for this past year for lunches?
I don't know, we'd have to look it up.
Okay.
What's the exact question, and you're not going to.
I'm just wondering how, how much money we have lost on, uh, uh, non-paid lunch fees, that's money we wouldn't have to worry about if we're given free lunches, so, I was just wondering how much money that.
It's not paid, so he's.
Correct, that has not been paid.
She, not, not as much as you think, or assistant, or something, they do a great job, I'll give you the exact number, next.
What's not been collected?
Yes, correct, correct, correct.
Maybe that's not a number.
Yeah.
Okay, any more discussion? If not, uh, Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Apple?
Yes.
Mr. McHale?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Mr. Glover?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Bid approval to purchase new buses, do I have a motion?
Some move.
Second?
Second.
Second, discussion? No discussion? All right.
How many bu, how many buses, how many buses, sir?
Two.
Two.
About two every year.
Yeah, I just, I didn't see that.
And these are actually for the next year, because most of the vendors are still fifteen to eighteen months behind. So I'm ordering them now, so that I can maybe have them by July or October next year, we're still waiting on both the buses that we have.
That's what I was going to ask.
A while back, but this bed bus is supposed to be here Friday, after thirteen months, the seventy-eight passenger diesel, they're telling me October, November, so I'm, I'm going to fall behind if I can't order them ahead of time, so that they're still coming every year.
We, we do it different, law assistance, instead of fleet buy, on a rotation system, she does a great job with her numbers on the management, by the time they're coming off, and so it, it don't hit us hard for a million dollars, it went down, it's hit us every year, so, it's really good the way it works.
And it goes down.
Did a great job.
How many Ford repairs, cause keeping, keeping them rotating.
And, and it works out perfect on years where they rotate off.
Yeah.
All right, I seen the two buses on this one.
Okay, all right, uh, no more discussion? If not, Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Apple?
Yes.
Mr. McHale?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Mr. Glover?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yeah.
Correction to line item number for made revenue amendments, do I have a motion?
Yes, sir.
Second.
Second.
Discussion? Anyone? Not, uh, roll call, Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Apple?
Yes.
Mr. McHale?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Mr. Glover?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Line item, excuse me, line item amendments to F Y twenty-four, one forty-one budget, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? If not, Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Apple?
Yes.
Mr. McHale?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Mr. Glover?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Revenue amendment for F Y twenty-four, one forty-three budget, do I have a motion?
Some move.
Second?
Second.
Discussions? Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Apple?
Yes.
Mr. McHale?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Mr. Glover?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Line item adjustments for F Y twenty-four, one forty-three budget, do I have a motion?
Some move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Apple?
Yes.
Mr. McHale?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Mr. Glover?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Myself, yes. A resolution number zero six dash two oh two four dash to transfer funds from federal project funds to general purpose school funds for twenty-four, twenty-five funding year, motion?
Some move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Apple?
Yes.
Mr. McHale?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Mr. Glover?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Summit, excuse me, summer, summer learning count approval, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second. All in favor? Post? Discussion of possible appointment, we haven't done that one, so I haven't got that to it, so, uh, any discussions? We need to bring up.
I'd like to put on the next meeting agenda, uh, for our next meeting, discussing our driveway issue at New Milton School, extending it around the back of the building, we've looked at that, I haven't, um, and discussing that again, and seeing if there's a alternative plan to help us suck the traffic out front.
Okay, we got it on, go ahead, sir.
Oh, good.
You want to talk about it?
You want to talk about it now? Or you want?
The next meeting.
You want to do it at the next meeting?
Next meeting, yes.
Go ahead and add the defeated on there also.
You want to put the defeated on there?
Add the defeated on there also, because there's.
Add the defeated. But you better put, add the defeated both.
We got some numbers back, some approximately on the defeated, and there, we don't know, depending on whether we went off the road, or, you know, wherever you get them, which way we go the best.
What about Fort Fortis go, I settled there on the highway the other day, good five or ten minutes, traffic, it's pretty bad.
You'll go New Mil, New Milton's road.
I think.
No kidding, it is.
It's all, it is.
We've had, we've had two, I mean, same fruit, we've had, I mean.
I know we had, it was already on there.
There's going to be issues, it doesn't matter, I was in Georgia, I used to, same situation.
Twenty-two months.
Clinton County, Kentucky, Monmouth, Kentucky, when, when people start getting there at one o'clock, you can't control it, and, and I don't, you know, how many parking places you make unless you got a mile of parking, you're going to have parking issues. We get, they actually clocked us out at New Milton, I think somewhere around between six and eight minutes from the time they let out, that whole place is cleared out. But if people starts getting there at one and lining up the road, it's an issue, and we can't control that.
Yeah.
If we try to work for, uh, state center to deepen the park, we don't get that, and stuff, it's.
Well, we never, we never got followed.
That's what I'm saying, we tried to, but it didn't, it came back to.
Been getting old, it's built. The number out there was a lot bigger than what we thought. Now, I'll talk about the number, the dollar number, oh, at the defeated, and, and, I think, at St. New Milton's, it's going to be very comparable.
I have a discussion, Adam, too, I want to bring up.
Oh, Roger.
Uh, where are we standing on our, our old bus garage building, the roof peeled back on?
It's actually, we finally got, finally got, we got the insurance folks to go ahead and get, we've been working on it, just building yourself around, we've actually got a bid on it, come in, supposed to be in this week, uh, came in a lot cheaper than what I expected, I came around the top of my head, and before you under what I was thinking, it's going to be put back on, we actually quoted the price to put metal around the, the concrete, and it was pretty long, too, to make it look a whole lot better.
I, I know at one time, we had considered selling the building, I didn't know whether, whether we'll sell it damaged or fix it.
Well, you can't do that, we can't, we can, we got to, we, it's insurance, we, you know, wind damage insurance, we've got to fix the building, or we don't, they won't pay for it. You can't just say, write me a check, and then we'll take that in return, so you can't do that, so, and, once you get it fixed, it'd be, you know, it'd be excellent.
In a case of debate.
It's going to cost us some money.
When they get wind damage.
With the purchase of the two Sabalot project down there, it's going to free up a lot of space. A lot of that operation, you're taking paper, uh, oil trees and that kind of stuff, so.
And if, I guess, Ms. Diane, you can always use, you need to use storage, yes, the bus garage, if, if we back, you know, evacuate the building, I mean, in other words, it still has a good roof on it, and you can use it for storage.
They're going to actually replace.
Yeah.
Wind damage, some of the wrappers and stuff, there's some rock in there.
And you'd be close to her.
Or it's going to be really nice, and I, and I very much, we're hoping insurance will get a whole lot of it, not all of it.
We're going to look back at the barn at any times.
Now, that I haven't, I hadn't heard of.
Have you done yours yet?
We turned it in, but.
Have you done yours yet?
I turned it back on.
Have you done yours yet? Yeah, that's the first. You done that.
Joe, I'll turn these pictures.
Yeah, and it took a little bit, I thought it, yeah.
Oh, any more discussions, if any, anybody want to put on the agenda?
I did, can I say something?
Yes.
Uh, if you hadn't had an opportunity, try to go by, I know, David, I know you was up there, I, I remember, uh, the show was up there, Randy, you may have been up there, the, the project at the elementary school, it was awesome, I just completed, it's state of the art.
It's awesome.
All free, million one or two, we, I think it was a bit, just a little at the end, but, uh, over a million dollars, that was free, and it's set up to expand up there, it really came back well. The buildings, if you get a chance, drive by, and see this, uh, it's amazing, the facilities that we're going to have in this county, that's just not the athletics of, cover every sport, they're going to help kids get home earlier, uh, uh, and help with, especially going for about not having to build as quick, because they're going to be able to have some of their classes in there, but the one going for is a little farther along, because we're bringing them along, but, uh, if you walk in it, you can't believe we've got something like this, it's exciting, you know?
Yes, sir.